I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning, everybody. And next is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Approval of claims.
Make a motion to approve claims for payment.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have, Michelle brought to us, a mobile home tax assignment. Do you want to give some information on that, or?
We have a private individual that has requested an assignment of a county health tax bill certificate with the consideration of paying $989 and a $10 assignment fee to pay the taxes that are delinquent on this mobile home. They've been delinquent and the county holds this tax bill certificate since 2009. And they want to get this as a viable mobile home again and get paying on it. I know that the lot rent has been delinquent, the taxes have been delinquent, and she just wants to take care of the mobile home and get it back as a taxable viable home, clean it up and get it ready, you know, to be a livable situation again. And for that, she's asking us to compromise the interest and cost that have been occurring, and she's willing to pay the net tax amount to cover all the taxes, including this year, for that assignment, and then she would do the legal proceedings to notify everybody. And then if no one pays the taxes back or redeems the tax bill certificate, then she would, she could get a title to the mobile home and have ownership for it. She's just requesting us to assign that tax bill certificate to her with that compromised tax amount. So she's actually paying all the taxes that are on the books for it and just asking for the interest to be taken off. She has given us some earnest money to say that she's serious about it and really wants to take ownership. And I know in the past that she's taken other mobile homes that have been in trouble and have gotten them back on track at the home, or at the mobile home park. So I feel like she's, would be a good candidate to get it back on the tax roll and fixed up for the park and for collecting tax on it.
So your opinion is this is a good thing?
Yes.
Randy, have you looked at this resolution by chance?
I have not. I have not, Lance.
Would you like to take a look at it?
I can. It's a one-page resolution. Is that something, Randy, you could read while we go through the meeting and then come back through to it? Or you want to?
I'm fine with that. So you want to go to the next item while Randy's reading through that?
If that's okay with Nancy. You're not going to talk, are you? Okay.
What was that?
That's great.
Okay. Next is the city's, City of Eldora's representative to the County Health Insurance Advisory Committee. Currently, we have Ian Riggs on there. He is no longer employed with the City of Eldora, and we're just there to remove him off the name, or off the list, and the City of Eldora will get back to us with another name to put back on.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, that we take Ian Riggs off that committee.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is set time and date for public hearing for disposal of county-owned property on the rail trail. And this is the disposal part of Marshall County's portion of the trail, correct?
It's Marshall Town.
Marshall Town, yes.
But it's the portion of the trail in Marshall County.
Marshall County. I got another question for Randy on that one.
Hopefully, I can remember what I just read.
Well, you want to go back to that one?
No. Whichever works.
Let's go back to the one you just read.
Okay. Yeah, I reviewed the, basically, the resolution, or resolution agreeing for the assignment of the certificate. I see no problem with that, once the county obtains that certificate, that you have the authority to compromise in regard to taxes, so that would be an appropriate measure to take with regard to that, I guess based upon the recommendation of the treasurer. I see no problems with the resolution as written.
Do you want to make a motion?
Now, we're going to make that motion to approve the agreement, the resolution agreement to the mobile home tax assignment.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brian?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, back to set time and date for public hearing on disposal of county-owned property. Is this going to be enough time to get something drawn up for that? We need to set a date for a public hearing, October 1st, sounds good. Will that work for you?
That would be enough time. I mean, there is not a problem there. And normally, and I'm just going to say normally, Lance, in regard to the public property disposal, normally in the past, I would actually draft this resolution.
Okay.
The one you're considering right now, okay? And it would, I mean, basically, now at this point in time, we'd just be setting the public hearing, and then the next step, of course, is to publish a notice of the public hearing, and then you want both a notice and the proof of publication as part of your record, and then you then have a resolution which is adopted at the time or after the public hearing. Okay? So, I mean, normally, I would, just because those three things that I mentioned, this resolution setting the public hearing, the actual notice and proof of publication, and that last resolution, actually all get recorded along with the deed that is given to show the proper compliance with the Code of Iowa and that the board followed the appropriate procedure. I don't know if publication, I mean, I can still draft a resolution. I can put together a written resolution with regard to what occurs today that is actually signed. I know there are a few things that I would want the board to include in that, and the main thing is, I'm not going to ask you to read off the legal description to that trail. I don't think I'd ask anybody to read that thing off, but who the proposed conveyance is going to. I think that's an important part, and then the date and time of the public hearing. Those are the two things there.
Not the time constraint we are on this.
I put this on the agenda because we have owned this since May, and Marshall Town has continually asked when we're going to deed it to them, and why it's been held up is beyond me, so I put this on the agenda to get it done. So if I should have come to you for a resolution, I didn't, but that's because whenever we set the time and date for public hearings on amendments and things like that, I don't usually do that by resolution. We just set the date, so my apologies.
And you don't have to. I don't know that that is covered the same way by statute as the conveyance of public property is.
My understanding for publication on this is that it's four and 20, and so with the date being four days prior to the hearing, I think having the date be a month out, you have lots of time to publish, and that's not going to be an issue, because normally, I ask for a month when I do mine, and mine are 10 and 20 for amendments and budgets. So having it be four and 20, this is, I think, an exceptional long time to get it done, but...
Yeah. I know a lot of times when dealing with, basically, look like at two weeks, a lot of times, between resolution setting and then the actual public hearing, I mean, I think that's the minimum, just because of, well, kind of where the publication cycles run with regard to the newspapers.
Well, they don't need to act on this today. I put, like I said, I put it on the agenda because I wanted it to move forward. So if you would prefer to come with a resolution next week, great, otherwise, I would suggest that they make the date and time, and then you follow up with the paperwork that you know has to be done, and then I think we agreed that we have enough time to get it done before October 1st.
Yeah. There's one thing, and this is, I mean, kind of discussion in regard to it, I'm going to ask you, Jessica, who in Marshall Town has been contacting you in regard to getting this conveyed?
He's a member of the Trails, Inc. On the top of my head, I cannot think of his name, but he works at one of the banks there.
Okay. Just, I know I've had contact a couple times, and, well, let's put it this way, the previous city attorney for Marshall Town, and then the new city attorney for Marshall Town, apparently there's just been a turnover there here in the past three months. There was a question raised. There was a question raised in regard to the form of deed, okay, at one point in time, and it was, well, let's put it this way, it was kind of like this. Heritage Foundation, I believe, originally gave a warranty deed.
We re-recorded it with a quit claim.
Yeah. And so Marshall Town was asking, well, why do we get a quit claim deed if you got a warranty deed?
Well, we didn't.
Yeah, well, to which, I mean, my thought is, there, to me, there's no way, no how any entity should give a warranty deed in regard to that property, okay? Just by the nature of what it is, okay, being an abandoned railroad, where, I mean, there's a whole lot of inherent, if you would want to say, problems with description easements and the like. So a quit claim deed would be the appropriate deed whereby you're giving everything that you have. You're not necessarily, you got a perfect title, but you're given whatever title you have. So if that, in fact, is now resolved, I don't see anything, but I think that was what was going on there in that background on that holdup. That's what was raised by the...
I had the quit claim deed recorded within a week of the warranty deed, because it was recorded here as a warranty deed, and then when I sent someone to Marshall County to record it, Marshall County is the one who said, mm, I'm not so sure you want a warranty deed. And they raised the question. So then I contacted the attorney who had drafted it from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, and the very next day, I received by courier another deed to re-record, and it was a quit claim, and it also added range, because range had been left off the description on one portion of it. So all of those things were fixed with the second deed, and in Harton County, it didn't necessarily, when it was re-recorded, it didn't necessarily reference the original recorded deed, but when it went to Marshall County, they did put in the documentation that they were doing that this was a re-recording of the previous deed.
Okay. I mean, with that, and, I mean, if they're all ready to go, I can't see any problem. Now, this is my understanding. Now, let's put it this way, we're going to have to put something as consideration with respect to this deed, with regard to it, but it is my understanding, they are not paying a significant purchase price. And in fact, I would probably put in there $1 another valuable consideration, and that probably would be very close, unless I'm, unless I'm off somewhere here, that basically, this was, my understanding, this was purchased with grant funds. The whole was purchased by Harton County by grant funds, and Harton County wasn't intending to basically charge fair market value.
I actually have the deed already, like, prepared, the quit claim to give it to Marshall Town. The Natural Heritage Foundation attorney drafted that as well, and I just, I'm just waiting to get it recorded.
Okay.
If you want that, I can give it to you.
Do you want us to table this, get all that information together, and bring it back next week?
I think you should set the date.
We'll set that here today, 3rd of 10. Be looking at three weeks. Would that be if you put it back a week? My eyesight runs out before that calendar.
Be fourth week, October 1st.
Yeah. I mean, now, but if you tabled it, you'd be looking at three weeks. Either, either one works from my perspective. I mean, either one works. I mean, you could set it today, or, I mean, you could wait till next week and have the written resolution in front of you.
You make the motion.
Well, to sum it all up, I guess, Ron is one that sits on that committee, and he's not here today, so he will be here next week, I believe, wasn't he?
Yep.
Yeah. It was my understanding that we were not going to do this until the cleanup was completed on the trail. I guess that was the impression I was under, that this wasn't going to take place until the cleanup was over. That's, and I don't know if I'm right on that or not, so, but the cleanup is, I'm not sure it is officially over yet or not, and that's a question for Ron, I know it was...
They were working on it yesterday.
Were they?
Yep.
So it might be done today, but yesterday it wasn't done.
And they weren't closed.
So I think doing this correctly from the start would be a good thing, so I don't see really the hurt in waiting one more week to set that date, getting the committee of Harton County to make sure that everything, the ducks in a row there, and Ron could touch pace with them, and so next Wednesday, we can have the resolution and just start going through like that. I don't think seven days is going to hurt us, if not, I think it'll actually help us make sure we have our ducks in a row on this.
I'm going to ask, Jessica, if you could give me that deed, I mean, beforehand, and I can see that legal description. Normally, I put that legal description in the resolution. I mean, that's going to really link them, I think, the Marshall County portions of all like that on a page of paper, but if you could get that to me, that'd help. Other thing, and I'm just going to kind of address, Brian, some of the things that you had said, and maybe update you a little bit. Probably the main thing in regard to that aspect, or about the only thing that would really tie into the salvage work, and not deeding it until the salvage work is completed, is that Harton County, Harton County has been assigned the lessor's interest in that short-term lease agreement with the railroad that deals with that. Marshall Town has not. I mean, it's just Harton County. Basically, if you deeded it, you could assign that, but, I mean, technically, the term of that lease has expired, I mean, at this point. And there was some question in regard to whether to send a formal notice to quit to the railroad or to extend the lease, and I know I had some communication with the committee, the Trail Committee, in regard to that. And basically, what we're looking at is, they have decided, or I think they have decided, I wasn't present at any meeting, but to give them a two-week window from, it would have started running last week, before taking any type of formal action. My suggestion was, at that point in time, if it isn't completed, then you give them the, I mean, the 30-day notice in regard to terminating, which allows an extra 30 days before they have to be out of there, but, I mean, one thing you're looking at is how bad do you want to kick them out when they're still, say, railroad ties sitting all over the place? And it's been their obligation in the past to get rid of that. But that's kind of where that, I think, was probably entered in.
Does it, is it better to have that completely cleaned up before we make this split? I mean, is it cleaner to have that, have them out before?
Probably the main thing, Brian, isn't just reduce paperwork.
Okay.
Okay? Because if you're, if you're running there, I mean, take a look, if you've got two owners, probably need to assign that lease. If you're taking action under the lease, then you're going to need approval by both owners.
What's our downside of keeping it another month or two? I mean, because they're not really paying us anything for it, it's just transferring the ownership, because the grant is paid for the whole trail, and we were just the instigator, or the, not the instigators, but the, what do you call that, Jessica, when we do all, we do the work of it, and the money was sent to us, so they will not be paying us for it, because the grant has covered the whole cost of the trail, so...
The fiscal agent.
There we go. That word right there, that's the one I was looking for. So I just wondered what the...
Liability.
Yeah.
I mean, liability is probably the biggest.
Okay.
I mean, in regard to that, is, at this point, I mean, basically, Harton County is potentially liable for that property in Marshall County, being the owner.
That's another piece to this that I don't know that I've spoken to you about, I know I've spoken to Lance, that I received a tax bill for the Marshall County portion in Harton County's name, and the portion of the trail in Harton County was not taxed to Harton County, it was taxed as a utility to the utility owner, which is the railroad. So between the two counties, they've already treated it separately, two different ways for taxation. And I'm not going to delve into the whole big topic of who did it right and who did it wrong, and how we fix it and whatnot, but it would have been a lot cleaner had we not owned it come tax time. It would have been a lot simplified, and not my problem, whereas right now, I, that's another urgency on my plate, is to say, I don't want to own this piece of the trail because, A, I don't want the liability, and B, I don't want the tax liability that goes along with it, should it be decided that Marshall County treated it the right way and we did it wrong, but that's not the way that it's leaning. I don't know how to say it better than that.
We got charged taxes on something we can't pay taxes on.
Well...
Is that clear?
For the record, I was told by the Department of Revenue that Harton County treated it correctly. That's all I'll say.
And is there anything that we can do that have, have something, a provision in our agreement, that if the railroad doesn't pay those taxes, that somebody else is going to take that responsibility?
Thing is, there are two owners ago, you know? I mean, there was another owner in the middle. I don't know what to say to it, but that's part of the push of why I put this on here. I understand not setting it today, but I'm satisfied with the fact that we had a conversation out loud as to what needs to happen. My urgency is too bold, and I certainly can wait. We've waited this long. I, another week is not going to kill me, another three weeks is not going to kill me, so...
I'll make a motion that we table this until next week, and when Ron gets back, we'll inform him of that to get us any information from the committee that would help Randy out and also find the day that we will know when that...
Rail will be done.
Yeah.
Salvage company.
Salvage company will be done. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and table this until next week.
I'll second that. Any more discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion tabled. Amendment to the county credit card policy. We had Dave and we lost him.
Can we do number nine?
Jail transport vehicles have, they have two credit cards that they use for transport, and they run to Omaha, I believe, twice a week, and it had a $2,000 limit, and they got to the point where they were using one card instead of both, and so one got to the limit a lot faster than what they had anticipated, and it got shut off, and a jailer had to actually use his personal credit card to put gas in it to get back home in Omaha. So to make this not happen again, they asked if we could please up their two transport vehicles to $3,000 limits so that this doesn't happen again. You're not affecting the limits on any of their other cards, but in order to do that, because your policy stated the $2,000 limit on those, I need you to approve a new one that says 3,000, and I need it to be reflected in a meeting like this in the minutes for the bank to agree to do that. And I don't believe we added any new cards.
No, I think it was, it was shifted.
Yeah. I don't think we're taking out any new cards whatsoever. It's, all their cards are already existing, you're just approving an extra $1,000 on two cards.
Two of the transport cards.
Yes, on two cards only.
And that's as an amendment? Nancy, that's what you want that as? Amendment to the credit card policy? I would go ahead and make that amendment to our county credit card policy, that we add $1,000 to two credit cards of the Sheriff's Department.
Transport cards.
Transport cards.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Make sure that one, a roll call. And, sorry, I skipped number nine, the 2080 agreement, joint undertaking of health insurance program between Harton County, Iowa, and Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation. And what this is, is allowing the Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation to join our insurance pool. Randy, do you have any comments on this? You've been kind of doing this left and right for us.
Well, I'm going to ask, I know this got sent up to the Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation, but I guess I didn't hear whether it was acceptable.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Cindy, I am going to tell you that I made two minor, just two minor revisions to what came up there, and one was, if you take a look at paragraph two, the way it ended with the number three, right above the three in paragraph three, it kind of looked like there were two paragraphs three. So I just changed in regard to this, a little bit of the spacing of those numbered paragraphs, so it doesn't do that. There's no change to the text. The other change that I made, which is before the board, I actually put heading over the signature lines where it is Harton County and Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation, but those really didn't change any substance, just kind of more the form. Basically, the 2080 agreement just kind of sets up between the two entities. I would say the main things there are in regard to collection of premiums, that being in the employer's hands, and the transference of those premiums into the, I'm going to call it the county fund, it's a trust fund, I believe, at Harton County Savings Bank. That is the main thing. Otherwise, this is, I'm going to say, lifted from the 28E agreements with the other participants in regard to the health insurance. So there really are not any changes there, other than perhaps slightly in regard to form, but in regard to any substance or term, it's the same agreement that the county has with those other entities.
Sounds good. I will go ahead and make that motion to approve the resolution with the Iowa Falls Area Development Corporation of this health insurance program.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Next is the auditor's monthly report. Dave, we skipped you while you were gone. We skipped you while you were gone. Auditor's monthly report.
Make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permits secondary roads. We have two.
Select two? Utility permits. Permit number 9-03-14A and permit number 9-03-14B, Midland Cooperative and Century Lake are doing some work, so I make a motion to approve those permits.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Secondary roads, anything? Sounds good.
Major.
Sounds good. Any other business? Hearing none, I'll ask for adjournment.
Make that motion.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pardon.